You know we got the contest this Thursday?
Yep.
You gonna show up?
Yep.
Good. Oh, don't you trip.
Chief, I got that check so you can do it.
All right, Danielle and Amanda.
All right. I've got the microphone. The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you. So tonight we have a public hearing, and then we also have our regular meeting after the public hearing if anybody has anything to say on the public hearing. But first, let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives for us to serve our country and our town. Thank you.
Okay, so it's June 9th, 7 o'clock. We have a public hearing, and this is about our Marlboro wastewater treatment plant of our expansion and the cost and the bond that we have to take. And it's the proposed increase improvements of the facilities of the Hamlet, a Marlboro Sewer Improvement Area, and the said town an estimated cost of $3,108,000 for the upgrades and expansions of the wastewater treatment facility related work inclusive of designing of the Marlboro plant. So the bond, when we get into the resolution, you'll see is just a little over, it's about a million dollars in a bond, a little over that. The rest is coming from grants and money that we've had from the ARAP money from the federal government, and grants from legislator Corcoran who got $500,000 from the county. And then we got monies from all the developers in town, including Dockside, who was participating in the cost of this of $609,000. And Bayside project was $300,000. So all combined is up to three, over, a little over $3 million, but we still need the bond for a million because we don't have all that money in the bank yet because the developers pay as they get their COs. So some of that money still isn't there, and some of the money we don't have because prices have gone up over the last three years as this has been designed. So unfortunately, we have to do this. So again, this is a time, if anybody in the public has any comments or questions on it, they can come up. And if not, we could go on. Come on, Mickey, come on up.
Mickey Simonowski, Marlboro, New York. Just to clarify, so the $609,000 from the developers on Orchard's on Hudson or Dock Road, the remain, they already paid $200,000?
They already paid $203,000, I believe, at this point.
Okay.
They paid before they even, that was the deal. They had to commit to our town. So even before they went to the planning board, even before they got approvals, before they got anything, they paid $203,000 upfront. When they get planning board site approval, they pay another hundred, I think it's a hundred and three, a hundred, something like that, but it's at least $100,000. And then the rest is as they get COs for each building.
So, and so the rest of that, I'm just gonna say $400,000 just for, or $300,000, that will come after they get the COs, and so that could be whenever the buildings are finished?
As buildings are being built, yeah, as each building is being built and each one gets a CO, there's a percentage of that remaining $300,000 that they pay until it's fully paid. So, yeah, it's a phase-in approach. So again, we don't have the money upfront, so that's, you know, part of the, why we have to bond some of it upfront. We'll do a ban first, obviously, so we could pay some of that down so we don't have to actually pay the interest for the bond overturn, over time. So, yeah, that's how that, that works. Then Bayside had the same, same, basically same structure, is they paid a little, they paid X amount upfront, and then they paid as their buildings were being built. So we, we based it on that.
So, so Hudson West was already paid their commitment because they have COs on all their buildings?
Hudson, the Dockside probably, right?
The Bayside probably.
Oh, the Bayside's done, yep.
So they already paid everything?
They're complete, yep, they're done.
Okay.
Yep. The only outstanding right now is the 403, oh, yeah, 403,000 or somewhere in that.
So absolute worst-case scenario, which nobody is anticipating, but if the Orchard's on Hudson doesn't go through quickly, that amount will still be included in the bond?
Yep.
Okay.
But now we could have a ban up to almost five years. So, you know, as long as everything, they do all their homework and it goes through the planning board, I fully anticipate that being built within the next three years completed. But that's if everything goes through the planning board. So I'm assuming it'll be good, and then we could pay it down. Because, yeah, we're gonna do probably a five-year ban before we transfer it over to the bond.
Okay.
So, yep.
Great.
All right?
Thank you.
Yep. All right then, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you. And now let's get on to the first meeting of the month, June 9th. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Motion to approve the minutes from the May 27, 2025 town board meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 27, 2025 town board meeting.
Second.
I understand.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Authorized payment of bills of $247,965.28.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of $247,965.28.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Anybody got any comments specifically on the agenda? Anybody have any, anybody on the board have any questions on any of the reports from our department heads? Anybody?
No.
Good job, Jerry. And the clerk's office, too. Since you're both here. Ellen, Charlie, Charlie's here, he's always here, Charlie. Well, Charlie, I gotta, okay. No presentations, but on presentations, what I'm gonna do is we're gonna do a motion that we, we talked about last meeting, and we do every June, right? I'm glad people are here for that. So obviously, June is Pride Month, and this board and the previous board has always, you know, took Pride Month seriously, and we actually honor them by putting a flag out in front of our building, which I don't know if many towns do, but I think this town and this board does recognize the importance of it. And I think it's something that we should do every year. Like personally, this is a personal thing to me. I actually have family members in the LGBTQ community, and I, you know, I think it's something that we should all be happy that we're able to do this and show our appreciation. So in saying that, I wanna make sure that everybody's on the board is still okay with it, and as of tomorrow morning, we will have the chief do his duty tomorrow that he does every year for us, is put the pride flag out, it'll be right out in the front of the building, and I just need a motion for us to do so.
I'll make the motion to put the flag up, and I recognize the LGBTQ community as well and support it.
Anybody else?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you, guys. You should've brought it tonight, Jerry. Okay. I know you do, we probably should do it right after the meeting, that'd be nice, you guys are here. Right, Tim?
Just a quick question, what's the condition of the flag? Is it still in good shape?
Yeah, it is. Okay. I have heard enough, so if I could give a quick... When is your place contacted by the legislature?
Oh, boy. Charlie, that's you, Charlie. All right, we'll take care of that, though. Uh... I hope it's him.
Is that the price?
Yeah, you got it, Joe. That's a good one. Old business. That's a good one. For old business, well, just like I said, I said last meeting, the highway department's pretty much done, except we're waiting for Councilman Zambito to put plantings out front. So I know he's getting close.
Well, we, we held off a little bit, we're waiting for the gutters. The gutter, no, the gutters need to be installed, we don't want them, we don't want them trampling on everything, because they gotta put ladders up and whatever, so as soon as, soon as the gutters are installed, we'll jump right on it.
All right, thank you. And, and I also wanna say again, in our last storm, you know, we were just saying, we were just talking about it, right, Dave? And the walkway did get washed out again, because there was one little spot that Dave was using to get his machine up and down, right, Dave? And he hadn't got to it yet. And of course, we had a major storm.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't that we didn't get to it, we thought, we thought that that general section didn't need to be stoned because the culvert didn't, ran under it, not over it, but what had happened was the culvert that's installed in the roadway is too small for the flow of water. When you get four inches of rain, things flood, there's really nothing the highway department can do about it, you just gotta wait for the water table to come down. But what had happened was the water overflowed out of the two-foot culvert and ran across the street and over top of where we didn't riprap, and it washed it out. So actually, that Sunday, we went down and cleaned it up, and then that following Monday, we, we did riprap that also, and I think, I think now it's fine, it's not gonna happen again. It's a little bit overkill, but we saw what could happen, so we don't, so...
There's a lot of rock.
It is what it is, it was really, we did, I did go, I did stop at the highway superintendent, we looked at the, the culvert and the, and the pipe, and it's, even if we changed it to like a three-foot diameter pipe, it really wouldn't do any, any, it wouldn't solve the problem. So we just, we did it so it doesn't wash out, that's what, that's what we did. So hopefully, I checked it the last couple times, and it seems to be working fine, so we'll keep an eye on it.
I just wanna say, though, Dave went there in the morning, saw it got flooded, and he was on the machine, I think, like boom, right away. Like he, Saturday, he sends me a picture, "I'm done." I'm like, "You're done?" Like, so, you know, you gotta give this guy a hand, because he goes, you know, he goes out of his way right away to fix things, and I, you know, that's, if every, anybody up here doesn't know me by now, you know I like things done right away. So, thanks again, Dave, so. I think the boat comes in this week, or is it next week we're coming in, right, Gail? Yeah, it's coming in, so start seeing the boats come in. And then I have, talking about down there, I have this letter to read, so the Geological Survey, I think I touched on this last meeting, at the, for gagging station installation, I don't know if, Gail, you wanna come up and talk about this just a little, since you met down there with them? And I'll show you some of the pictures.
So the US Geological Service used to have a flood gauge at the north pier of the Milton Landing when we originally bought the property. They moved it over to Poughkeepsie for just logistical reasons, it didn't work well over there, so they wanna reinstall one at the Milton Landing, because it worked fine there, and they're not sure, the new people, why they really moved it. So me and Gary Lazaroff met with the people, came down from Troy, went over what they need to do. There is a sensor going out about 400 foot in the river that's gonna monitor flow, I believe, and there's also a sensor mounted about 15 feet down on one of the piers that'll monitor turbidity. I could have that backwards, but, yeah. So that's gonna be at the base of the river, shooting up, and all this goes live to the USGS Service's website, which anyone can check on at any times, it measures river levels. Basically, there's a few, there may be one down in Beacon, but this'll be the actual, the closest one within 20 miles or so. Most major streams in, in the state have one, or multiple ones, to measure stream height, so this has your, measure turbidity, flow, and height, river height. We did think it would be best to put it actually on the pier, there's a box with a solar panel, and I believe there's also gonna be a camera, so it'll be a live stream, anyone can access a live stream of the Milton Landing from anywhere on their website. So it'll all be most likely put on the pier, and it won't affect anything, it won't affect the ships. It's just for the betterment of the community and society as a whole, for scientists to keep this documentation, all this gets, all this information gets put down forever and saved somewhere, and, you know.
I think it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, this little thing gonna be at the bottom of the, the river there, it's pretty deep there, too, so...
Yeah, it's 45, 50 feet deep where they're gonna put it, so, and it's gonna have 150 pounds of weight on it to hold it down, so it doesn't flip over.
As long as you don't hook it with your boat when you're striking...
Yeah, they do have issues with anchorages, but because it's only 400 foot from the pier, they say generally, nobody's gonna anchor there, you know? If anybody's gonna tie up there, that's one thing, but, you know, nobody'll anchor there, so, so...
So that's the background, so basically, I just need board permission to allow them to do this. So does anybody wanna make a motion to say yes? I could call them back and allow them to do this.
I will make the motion to allow the USGS gauging station to be installed at the Milton Pier.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, so move. Yeah, something, you know, we have this pier down there, and I think it attracts a lot of people when they go by, and they're like, "Ooh, look at that," right? And they wanna, they wanna utilize it and use it, and, you know, the more it gets used and the more it gets publicized, I think it just brings more attention to our town and what's been done down there. So I think it's, it's an awesome thing. So Gail, thank you, and thank Gary for going down there and taking care of it, because you guys know way more about that than I do, so that's, we got a great team, like everybody's got their specialties. So, all right, so I need also a motion now for advertisement for the assessor's position, you know, said day, it's coming in September, Cindy is retiring, so better late than never, but Cindy has been putting out her feelers to different people to interview for this position, but we formally have to advertise for this position. So we have a whole write-up from her, we got it in help from the county in writing this...
Does that mean that Kathy's leaving, too?
Kathy is not leaving. Kathy is still staying as part-time, so we'll have a part-time assistant.
We're going to a full-time assessor, because we talked about part-time for a while.
No, full-time assessor, part-time assistant, we have it now, so. So I need a motion to advertise.
All right, I make a motion to advertise for assessor position.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Correspondents?
Scott, can we go back to old business for a second, though?
Oh, sure.
Can we get an update from the chief on any further action or progress from the garage, given the public comments about the last couple meetings?
Oh, sure, yeah, no, thanks for bringing that up. I've got so many things in my head. Yes, so on the garage, myself, the chief, Dave, Tommy, our code enforcement officer, Mr. DiOrio, and Mr. Joe Gennaro met in my office the day after our meeting, I believe, on the last meeting. So we had a very good discussion, I showed them all the complaints, I showed them all that the people are complaining, and that, you know, obviously, if you have music on 10, 11 o'clock at night, I'd be complaining, too. They explained that it's a, you know, a big draw for their business, and they make, you know, a lot of people come for that, and it helps them survive, and I get that point of it, too, I get both sides of the scenario, but there has to be a compromise here. So at this point, you know, they can have a ban inside, they told us they're only gonna have two bans per month, they're gonna stay inside, they're gonna shut the overhang supposedly, they told me, and they're gonna have bans earlier, and I think they had the bans earlier...
I went down personally this weekend when they had the ban, and they did have it inside, they did lower the volume, and they do have, I don't know, I think it's an app on their phone, it's a decibel reader.
Yeah, like we talked about.
And I did, I did see the gentleman outside that manages the place outside on the property line taking decibel readings. My wife and I rode by two or three times that day, and, and honestly, it wasn't disruptive, you could, I mean, you could barely hear it on the street, whereas before, you could hear it, you know, a mile down the road. So they're trying to comply, I don't know, Jerry, if you guys got, had gotten any complaints?
I checked, I didn't get any complaints this weekend. I did also go there and verify that it was a ban on Sunday. The only complaint that I'd like to express, that's really the complaint, is normally they express how they would keep those curtains closed, but one curtain with a van was playing into the building, so the rail would be to their back.
Right.
That one curtain was open, I'll assume because of the heat, but that being said, even with the curtain open and their reduced volume, did certainly do that, was not atrociously loud, and that was a infernac supply incident.
Yeah.
And that was exactly what I witnessed, and upon asking that question, they did say it had to do with the heat, and my reply was, "You're taking a chance. If, if Jerry gets a complaint, they're gonna make you put it back down. As long as the decibels are down and you're not disruptive, then I guess we'll be okay."
So I'm glad they took my advice on that, that's the app, it's pretty easy, right? It's on, right on your phone, so, you know...
I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you, we, we had a couple uncomfortable conversations, I'll leave it at that.
No, yeah, it was...
But, you know, it was, it was placed to them that either you're gonna comply, or there's gonna be a problem.
Yep.
And I'm sure everybody realizes it's kinda uncomfortable for me, but you gotta do what you gotta do, so...
No, but we did...
The day of the meeting, I couldn't feel tolerating the violations, that the days of, they turned it down, you have a complaint, have come to them to do the number of complaints that we've done.
No, I mean...
They were truthful, and I think they made great efforts.
They did.
And great accomplishments, this ban is passed.
No, they did.
And continue to honor it.
I mean, we were straightforward, um, we told them, like you just said, we're not, this is the last warning, and that's it. So I'm glad that they did do what we talked about, and hopefully, it stays that way, and it's a compromise, right? I do understand that they need to have people come into their establishment so they could keep operating, and we want them to keep operating, so, but we also have to have them be cognizant of the people that sleep at 10 o'clock at night and don't wanna hear a rock band going, so it's good. So that was good progress. I mean, and the other one is, I can't really talk about it much, because now we're back in litigation with someplace upstate, but just so everybody knows, we did go to the Supreme Court, we did get the judge to side with us, we did get the injunction, and he did allow them to have this last, this last wedding on Saturday, because he didn't wanna have the bride and groom be interrupted 24 hours before their wedding. But I would just say, I can't say much more, but I would not have any more events there. So, and I'll leave it at that, so, but we are, we are doing what we're supposed to do, so. Any other old business?
No, thank you, I appreciate the update, chief.
But that was, yes, thanks. All right. Correspondents? To the town board of Town of Marlboro, the Sarah Hall Freed Library is planning an event for families to be held at the Milton train station on July 30th. The program features maneuver caravan dance company, and local children are invited to participate. The company will hold two workshops at the library prior to the event to teach children how to perform and dance. The event is free for all residents of the Milton and Marlboro and the surrounding region. This letter is to request that the fee for using the Milton train station be waived for the library, given it is a nonprofit status. And thank you for your consideration. That's from Raven, and she's the library director, if anybody hasn't met her, very nice lady. So I just need a motion to waive the fee for the Milton library for their train station function on July 30th.
I will make the motion to waive the fee for the Milton library on July 30th for their function at the train station.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Another one, this is from Rosemary, though. The library is hopping. So this is, the library is planning a three-film series focusing on environmental topics. The first is a series called The Wind Shipped on September 12th, 5 to 8 p.m. It is about a schooner, the Apollonia, right? Apollonia, oh, that's the, that's the boat that we, okay. That is reviving at the tradition of a freight by sail on the Hudson River. Apollonia's home is in the Hudson. Both the train station and the south pier are available for that date and have been reserved. Apollonia will sail to Milton Landing. Oh, wow, really? You finally got them, huh? That's good. The tentative program will include a short talk by Tom Schroeder on the history of the fruit exchange and shipping of goods to the New York City from the landing. Screening of the film will, with the producer, captain, and crew in attendance, and question and answers, and then a tour for the ship. We also plan to screen The Pollinators, which is particularly filmed, partially filmed on the Clark's Family Farm. The date and time are still being worked out with the producer for this film, and the next, we are requesting the use of the community center. All programs are free and open to the public, we're requesting the use of the facilities and waiver of the associated fees. Thank you, Rosemary Y. So I need a motion to waive the fees for the use of the pier and the community center when they pick that date, and of course, as long as it's available, which I'm sure you'll pick a date that's available, so, yep.
Okay, I'll make the motion to usage of the pier and waive the fees.
And the community center.
And the community center.
And then a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And this is the time, public comment, anybody got any public comments? Come on up, Joe.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm Joseph Casordar, Milton. I wanted to invite everyone to, I think this is our fourth annual Marlboro Open Studio Tour. Marco, the artist group, is having it on Saturday from noon to 6:00, and there is a, I should move this over here so I can see it better. There is an artist meet and greet at Locust Grove on Friday, the 13th, the night before, from 5:00 to 7:00. So there'll be 17 of us, including me. You can go to marco.org/most, so M-A-A-R-C-O dot O-R-G slash M-O-S-T for the information and to download a map. And the map also includes locations of the apples for the apple parade, so...
I think if you could get that to Danielle, she could put it on the website.
Oh, perfect, that would be great, yeah, yeah.
Oh, she did, good, perfect, yeah. And this is this weekend?
This weekend, yeah, the day before Father's Day, so...
I'll be upstate. My wife got us going upstate for the weekend. All right.
And is that the Locust Grove you said?
The meet and greet is at Locust Grove on Friday evening, 5:00 to 7:00, and then the tour itself is Saturday from noon to 6:00, so it's at different locations.
All right.
Yeah.
Hey, while we're on the subject of Marco, what's going on with the apples?
So I heard from Veronica today that she wants, I think, started installing tomorrow.
Okay.
Sean Plovers is already up in front of his business.
I saw his, yeah, I saw that.
It's a little behind schedule, because there's a lot going on, but that's, that's a, it's above my pay grade.
Is Veronica working with Gary, do you know? Okay. Because I did have a conversation with Gary, and he said he was waiting on Veronica, and Veronica was...
All the orders, they're on the ground.
They're all on the ground?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
As long as they're getting out there, I was wondering, so...
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to see them soon, so...
Okay, all right.
But thanks to the town for your support for us and for supporting Pride and...
And if you also wanna remind Veronica, because I know she's got a lot on her plate, I had had her come down here, and I wanna, I wanna fill this room up with art.
Yes.
And she took pitch, she took like the scans of the room, so maybe if you follow up with her, I think it'd be awesome if we had art in this, and we got a perfect canvas, right?
Yeah.
So I would be happy to, you know, talk to the superintendent, I don't think he'd have a problem, we could put some art up, and if you wanna interchange it monthly, you know, every six months or something?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Could do that.
Yeah, I'll definitely let her know.
All right? Alright?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else got any public comments? Jerry, you got any public comments? Go ahead, Rosemary.
I just wanna say one thing, jiving with the, uh, bill and the chip coming to the landing, the concept, we have three loads of planning and, uh, the Harlem, another landing test, so that's the first date, it's the tenth or thirteenth, and the main date is Wednesday. So that would mean, I think, we're really highlighting our landing from here, and they'll go to train station for-
And that's the date we wanna have the state people come down, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll, we're, we're-
We'll coordinate.
Some community, and we'll, um, get it all-
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good idea.
And they also put an idea in, that if they come to put the crossing in, we'll use the, uh, grass, you know, the, but the train station part, the people will have a music down below, and they can sit on the grass.
Okay, yep, alright, perfect. Anybody else?
Is there gonna be a ceremony tomorrow, or for the, uh, pride flag, or just, I mean-
Uh, we haven't had a ceremony, but we could do, like I said, if you wanna do something quick, we could, you know, if Jerry wants to go find the flag, I, if we could get it up, we'll put it up right now, since you're here. While we're reading a boring resolution here, Jerry can find it. Hey, this resolution is, is, I'm not, I don't know if I'm gonna read it all, but I'm gonna read the highlights of it, because these could be a little long. Just know we're, we're borrowing money. Unfortunately. Alright, this is gonna be, uh, Resolution Sixty-three to authorize the increase improvements of facilities of the Hamlet and Marlborough Sewer Improvement Area in the Town of Marlborough. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following resolution authorizing increase improvements of the facility, see what I mean, repeating? Facilities of the Hamlet and Marlborough Sewer Improvement Area in the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, at the maximum estimated cost of three million, one hundred and eight thousand dollars, and authorizing the issuance of a one million, eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollar serial bond as said town to pay the cost thereof. Whereas the Town Board of Town of Marlborough has received the map plan, report prepared by Reiner and Laros PC dated May two, twenty twenty-five, the map and plan, which describes the need for the upgrades and expansion of the wastewater treatment facility in the Hamlet and Marlborough Sewer Improvement Area, the project and estimated cost of three million, one hundred and eight thousand dollars, inclusive of design, engineering, and professional fees. Whereas the Town Board accepted the map plan on June ninth, twenty twenty-five, at the public hearing, and the map plan and the proposed increase of improvements of the facility of the Hamlet and Marlborough Sewer Improvement Area, uh, was duly noted, noticed for June ninth, twenty twenty-five, seven PM prevailing time. And whereas all the pro, uh, proceedings were duly had and taken by the Town Board of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, pursuant to Section two oh two dash B of the town law of the Town Board, has it be public interest increase of improvements of facilities of the Hamlet and Marlborough. Sewer Improvement Area is said town maximum estimate three million, one hundred and eight thousand dollars. They really wanna make sure you know that this is gonna cost three million, one hundred and eight thousand dollars, don't they? It's like, ba-ba-bang, consistent of the increase in improvements at the wastewater treatment facility described in the map summarizing hearing. And basically, uh, okay, so here you go. Funds of the available town pursuant American Rescue Plan Act, so these are the federal funds that we got, uh, and the amount, and this is combined with the other funds that we have. Basically, the American, if everybody doesn't know, the American Rescue Plan Act, we got close to nine hundred thousand dollars from the federal government, so it's about eight eighty-eight, to be exact, somewhere in there. And then the rest is, adds up to one point six four one six four seven, and development, uh, contribution still of four hundred and fifty-seven, nine fifteen. Proceeds obligating issued to the town, so this means we have a financial, uh, uh, of one million, eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars we still gotta raise. So that's where we're gonna take out for the bond. And whereas the Town Board wishes to authorize such increase of improvements of the facility to Hamlet and Marlborough Sewer Improvement Area and provide the financing of portions of the cost there in an amount of one million, eight, uh, thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars in pursuit of local financial law. I'm not gonna read all this. And this is all online, so anybody wants to read it, they can read it. Upon this resolution taken effect, the same shall be published in the summary form of the Southern Ulster Times, which is hereby designated as the official newspaper of the said town for the town, for such purpose, together with the notice of the town clerk, is substantially the form provided for the Section eighty-one zero zero of the local finance law. The foregoing resolution was voted upon with all council members voting as follows.
Councilperson Molinelli?
Yes.
Councilperson Kauki?
Yes.
Councilperson Sessa?
Yes.
Councilperson Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes, thank you very much. And this is the certification form that Colleen's gonna fill out. And if everybody noticed, welcome back, Councilman Molinelli, so he's been dealing with some personal issues, and he's feeling better. So he's here, and we wanna thank that he's back, and still here, so good job, Daddy. And, uh... So since you're back, Ed-
I don't know if I'm any good at this anymore, but anyway, I'm gonna-
I'm gonna give you the last word.
You haven't?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, man. At seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven? We're gonna adjourn for a, till next time.
You gotta make a motion, Joe.
Make that motion.
I need a second. I second it. All in favor? Alright, thank you, everyone, we'll get, got the flag, we'll do a little thing outside.